Everyone can stand up and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, welcome everyone. We're gonna start out with public to be heard. Is there any today?
No.
No, alright. We're gonna skip right up to our good news.
I have a slide, do you wanna on the slides or do you just wanna read some?
Uh, I'll just read a couple.
Okay.
I think we got a couple presentations tonight, so we'll make it a little bit quicker. Alright, from JK, Jordan Brand, JK is assistant principal. Each Friday, we have been featuring two of our staff members on our video announcements. It's great for the students to get to know some of our unsung heroes of JK, such as food service workers and custodians, et cetera. This is Wazaluzki, our school social worker. Grateful every day to work with the student support team at JK. We have Maureen Gittaro, Jackson School Principal. Carrie Wilson, occupational therapist at Jackson. Is a wealth of knowledge and takes time to support teachers and students. She gives interventions that create a supportive classroom environment. And with a great picture, do you have the one from Andrea Smith, Carla?
It's on the next page.
Do you have one on the slide? Yeah, she attached a great picture with this one. Sorry, I put you on the spot.
That's not good.
Yeah, that one there, perfect. She's got a great picture attached here. Andrea Smith at Batavia Middle School. Batavia Middle School teachers and staff are raising awareness for breast cancer by wearing pink every Wednesday in October. As a breast cancer survivor, I sponsor October's dress down charity and send all donations to the Breast Cancer Center of Western New York. And there are plenty more on the site listed, so please feel free to go on and take a look at them. Next up, our board appreciation side.
We have some, yeah, just take that for me since we're like recognizing you. I wanted to give my thank you to the board. We have some special guests here, we have a special video for the board. In October is Board Appreciation Month, so we thank our seven dedicated board members. We have some students here to recognize you as well, some very special gifts this year. I think I wanna start, I just wanna recognize a couple things. Our clerical unit donated fifty dollars to the United Way Backpack Program in honor of the board, so we thank them for that. And I'd like to begin with Mrs. Klanders, fourth graders in the steam lab at JK has sent you a digital thank you. So Steve is our tech roommate at JK, so Mrs. Klanders show that for you, please. Okay, why don't we have Mr. Cummings and his students here, they have a special gift that they have made for us. So Mr. Cummings is our technology teacher in the middle school. Chris, go ahead, yep, up front, help yourself. And just explain what they are and how you made them and what they mean.
So anybody that graduated from Batavia High School played on this gym floor. This has been recovered from the pre-Capitol project, I believe. So these two young men, introduce yourself boys.
I'm Rainan.
All I did was I cut these pieces down for them. I showed them how to use Adobe Illustrator, I showed them how to use the laser engraver, and then they took it from there. So do you guys wanna match the names and pass them out? Thank you.
You guys did a great job on this.
Good job, guys, thank you. So sticking with the theme of technology, Mr. Voorhees is here, he's our high school tech teacher, and we invited him to engage in a similar project, and they have some cool things for you as well. So Mr. Voorhees, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put anybody on the spot, there's no names on these. But inside each one of the boxes, you'll find a water bottle, a cup holder, and a Batavia wrestling keychain. These are all made on our laser engravers, these guys helped me with these.
So let's show the water bottle, maybe the kids can explain how they made them on the engraver. I'm about to put you on the spot.
Alright, so there's a carving on all of these, and you just put it in. You have to adjust it just right in the engraver, so it doesn't burn through, 'cause this is very thin and all of that. So when you put it in, as long as you put it in and you, what, through Adobe Illustrator?
Yep.
Through Adobe, and you put it in, you technology program it, you stick in the engraver, and it comes out with all of these. Yeah, but for this cup, how it has like a curved angle, we use a piece called a rotary grid. And it just allows us to laser engrave on the surface, since it's just a straight vertical laser.
In the same machine on the laser engraver, we also used Adobe Illustrator to put the school's logo on it, and we also used it to cut through the material entirely.
And I just wanted, as these guys pass these out, I just wanted to take a second to thank administration and the board. When I first started here four years ago, we only had like two tech classes. So it would be possible for a student to be just a freshman and take robotics and the DDP class, and then meet and never see them again. These are upperclassmen, Gunnar's taking most of my classes, Brooke's taking most of my classes, and Chase is a sophomore, and he's starting to take those classes too. So we have like, we have five new tech classes in total, so they can like take a C class now. So it's really, it's been great for me to be able to see them pass that freshman sophomore year, see them in their junior and senior years. So thank you for letting me add courses to our course offerings.
Can I get a photograph real quick?
Hold it, tower over top.
Mrs. Corzio, do you wanna present those t-shirts now?
Sure, there's some t-shirts from Team Robert Morris and some cards. I'm just gonna hold them up, and you guys can find your sizes at the end. But we just wanted to present you your t-shirt and then a fun thank you card as well.
Thank you.
Can I say the most boring gift for last? I have certificates of appreciation for each board member from NISBA. Says, NISBA and BCSD recognizes our board for their dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children of this town and school and city. School Board Recognition Week, October thirteenth to seventeenth, October twenty twenty-five. So congratulations to all of you and thank you, Jess, thank you. Jen, thank you. Carla, thank you. Alana, thank you. Corinne, thank you. Thank you. And Dan, thank you very much, thank you.
I could actually hand these out.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And so thank you to our students and teachers for answering the calls and showing appreciation for our board. I think it was a cool idea that you're to do homemade gifts, so thank you for the work also to show up your tech programs as well. So well done as students and teachers, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Enough about us, let's move on to our presentations, and we have our senior trip presentation. We have the class of twenty twenty-six advisors.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Janine Scannio, I've seen you guys before. Usually it's for international trips, but this time it's for a local trip or within the state.
Yep, and I'm Andy Sedan, we're both senior class advisors.
So we let the students vote on which trip that they wanted, and they chose that they wanted New York City. And that's kind of their theme for the whole year. So if you look outside of the main office, they won the mural this year. They painted a New York City theme within the Big Apple. And they're even gonna use that for their prom theme, is gonna be New York City also, and so they wanted to go to New York City. So that's kind of our theme for the whole year, is New York City. So this is a travel, this is like an itinerary. We would be going on June twenty-first and twenty-second. The twenty-first is on a Sunday, and the twenty-second is a Monday. So on the first day, we would be meeting here in the morning, driving to New York City on coach buses. And then when we arrive in New York, they're gonna have time in Times Square to go shopping, see all the different things in Times Square, some time on their own. And then we're gonna meet together for dinner at Margaritaville. And then after that, we're gonna walk to theater for a Broadway show. We have some options of which shows, and we're gonna be meeting with our class officers and getting their input on which show they would like to see. So there's a couple different ones that will be playing at that time. After the Broadway show, we'll be going back on the coach bus to stay in Newark, New Jersey at a hotel there. And then if you wanna hit that, so there is late night security that will be at the hotel to make sure all the kids are staying while we're there. Then the next day, we'll be having breakfast at the hotel. And then we're gonna go to the Edge Observation Deck, and then go on the Staten Island ferry around the Statue of Liberty and visit the nine eleven memorial. So both of my daughters live in New York City, like they graduated from college, they live there, they love New York. I've been to New York many times, but I've actually never been to the Observation Deck, so I'm kind of excited to see that. And this nine eleven memorial, I have been to, but it's really well done, and I think it's a really important thing for the kids to go and see, so that that's something we never forget. And then they would, we would drive back to Batavia and be back at ten thirty PM on that evening. So the trip includes the motor coach, a tour manager, staying at our hotel, security at the hotel, breakfast on Monday morning, dinner on Sunday night, and then all admissions and the tips for the bus driver. You wanna just hit the last one? So we have estimated costs for the trip, and it's really gonna depend on how many students want to go. So depending on how many we get, the price changes a little bit. So if we have more people, it'll be a little bit less, if less people sign up, it'll be a little bit more. And all of the fundraising that we've already done, and that we will be doing more fundraising this year, we're putting that toward the prom, because that's something that all of the students will be going to the prom, most likely. So we wanted most of our previous fundraising to go to that. The fundraising we're gonna use for this trip is we're doing like a popcorn sale that they've done, a lot of the other grades have. And this way, kids can choose to do it or choose not to do it. And there are some kids who paid for their entire senior trip by selling enough popcorn to pay for their trip. Other kids are like, I don't really wanna sell any, I just wanna pay the money. I got a job and I'm gonna pay for it that way, and that's fine too. So whatever money each individual person makes selling popcorn, will go directly to their account and take off the price of that trip for them. So do you guys have questions for us?
How many chaperones do we have going?
It will depend on how many students sign up, so.
In the past, I believe it's been, the number was eight. I believe last year, the one I'm on my last trip, so I imagine comparable number based on how many students go.
And I should've put that in this, and I didn't. I know that the tour company did send us something saying like, if you have this many chaperones for this many students or this many. So it isn't, it's a little different for my international trips where you know like this many people, you get another chaperone, this many, you'll have another chaperone. This, we can kind of choose how many chaperones we want, but it will depend on how many teachers are interested in going and how many. But we would definitely make sure we had enough chaperones, so that it wasn't, the kids aren't not being chaperoned. So I can find that out for you, because she did send us, but I don't remember the exact number for that. Any other questions? Alright, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Alright, so at this time, we need to have a motion and a vote to approve the senior trip.
It's approved.
By Ms. Smith. By, second by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I think they left before, but congratulations, your senior trip's been approved. Alright, next up for presentation, we have Ms. Corzio for Robert Morris.
Alright, good evening, thank you for having me. I'm here to present on Team Robert Morris this evening on your special night, so exciting. Displayed here is Team Robert Morris, and what you, what's pictured in the picture are our UPK preschool teachers, our teacher aides, we have a related service team, our maintenance team. And we really have just been trying to live, it takes a village, right? And many hands make light work. And coming together, our focus is really, we're working to shift from a focus on teaching to a focus on learning as a learning community. And that's from an emphasis on what was taught, to an emphasis on, to more of a fixation on what are our students truly learning. Also going from that coverage of content to how are our students demonstrating that proficiency. In addition to shifting our mindset, we are also working to create our early learning center when we bring over kindergarten in the fall of twenty twenty-six. So we're really working on coming together as a team and looking at our systems and processes to make that smooth transition in addition, in adding kindergarten, and looking at what do, what do we really want this to look like with our youngest learners? How are we gonna get there? We're gonna utilize our strategic plan to guide us in keeping the main thing the main thing. And so what it currently looks like at Robert Morris is we're really looking at that safe and orderly environment, utilizing our safety teams, we're working closely with our construct, the construction team around the Capitol project that we're in the middle of at Robert Morris, looking at some behavior supports that our kiddos might need, and some programs that we offer to help us do that work. Here you can see some of our friends enjoying their first day on our new playground, and that just kind of keeps us going in that ultimate goal. So a big, a big challenge that we face is around our construction. We had to move from one half of the building to the other half of the building for this year. And so we really had to look at the things that we can control versus the ones that we can't. Because we're facing things like traffic flow, parking, having access to certain parts of the building that we used to have that we don't have anymore. Working with outside organizations that utilize the, our building. And so making sure that we are communicating to all of those stakeholders, families, staff, the construction team, building and grounds, various departments. As you are aware, we also house the IT department, nutritional services, and the special education department. So the construction is a big challenge for us, but I'm really proud of our team, 'cause we're really facing, we're coming together, we're being flexible, and we're working with what we have. Here's an example of just a communication that went out to families around our student pickup and drop off, and how we had to rethink what that looks like, depending on the access to the building that we have. Our safety team has also started safety series to let our staff and students know that you are safe here. And it's just another way of setting those expectations around our safety drills to allow them to feel safe. We're also looking at how are we empowering our students. Here's an example of how we're empowering students to maximize their potential around cafeteria expectations. One of our challenges was that we did lose access to our cafeteria. So again, we had to come together as a team and look like, well, what is that gonna look like for us moving forward? So how did we shift our gym space so that it becomes a cafeteria and gym space, while also using that space to teach our kiddos what it's like to be in a cafeteria? So you can see they're in the process of building monsters as a way to celebrate, as an incentive to follow those expectations of staying seated, learning how to talk with their friends and have those conversations at an appropriate volume, but also while keeping it clean and safe in the cafeteria as well. And for this current cycle, our first two classes to build their monsters will be the classes that get to be on the playground during our ribbon cutting. So again, just finding relevant rewards and exciting things to celebrate our youngest learners while they've reached their maximum potential. It's also important for us at Robert Morris to make sure that everyone is feeling welcomed and valued. One of the programs that really does this well for our, for the ones that struggle the most, 'cause we do get kiddos that have never been to a program before, they've maybe just been home, some come from daycare, some have early intervention services. And Primary Project really helps some of those honeys that are kind of struggling on like the edge. And so I do wanna play just a couple minutes of this clip, 'cause they do a really nice job explaining what Primary Project is. And it wasn't until this year where I went to a two-day training that I had a strong understanding. And then I'll talk to you a little bit more about afterwards, how I, there's a connection to the work that happens in Primary Project, and how can we, how can that translate to other support staff in the building by sharing those skills and strategies?
All children face some degree of aggression when it comes to going to school, and that's normal. And every child handles these experiences differently. Some may connect with their teachers more than their peers, others may connect with their peers more than their teachers. And others may not connect with either one of them, which is all okay. But one of the most important things to do is to recognize and address these adjustment difficulties, because once you do that, you significantly increase your chances for your child to be successful.
Primary Project uses evidence-based techniques to build resiliency in children and to navigate their social and emotional landscape. My hopes for my children as they enter school is that they, they just enjoy school. They have fun, and they are making lots of friends in an environment that's safe and supportive. And a school is such a great opportunity for them to learn more about themselves and others around them, and also be a kid.
Children approach the school year very differently. Some children might approach it with a lot of enthusiasm and excitement for the year ahead. And other children, it takes them a bit more time to connect to the school setting and to adjust to all the changes that are going on in the school.
In Primary Project, kids will come into the playroom. If they play out something that's bothering them, they gain some mastery. They can try on new ways of being. If I am a kid who feels isolated, like I don't have any friends, or maybe I feel anxious, I can play out maybe a confident person in the playroom. Maybe I can show you my hearts, maybe I can play out in a way that is much more powerful. As I try on new ways of being in the playroom, kids will often try on those new ways of being in the real world.
Play is the foundation of learning, the foundation of creativity, self-expression, constructive problem solving. Children use play to make the work meaningful.
Play is a child's language, toys are their words.
And so just that ending quote, play is a child's language and toys are their words, is something that we're really honing in on and really looking at our language in the classroom with students during the learning centers. And I'll talk more about learning centers as it relates to our work with the Office of Early Learning. But what you also see on here is a behavior, is our documentation of some behavior scenarios that we face at Robert Morris outside of the regular classroom management system. And again, just showing you as a team how we're working together to kind of take a closer look at that and what support students need, the interventions that we have that we wanna put in place and for allow us to kind of look at that data and see what is working or where a student might need more support. At the upper levels, you'll hear it as like a discipline referral, but mostly at, at Robert Morris, it's really documentation and figuring out what are those interventions, again, that we have access to? Or what are we not using to really support that student as they continue their education, or really start their education career and figure out, you know, what does that look like in the classroom and throughout our building? As you walk through our halls, you'll hear a lot of that work in like the choices that we make. So we really focus on red choices or green choices, and we really just wanna focus on those green choices and just bringing it back to safety. So in a lot of the conversations, if you were to read through our intervention document, is really bringing the kiddos back to a conversation around safety and why, why we're looking at a green choice versus a red choice. Alright, so through all the work that we're doing, that second part of that strategic plan, that collaborative culture, culture is really something that we're trying to keep at the forefront. At Robert Morris, we're really looking at preschool and UPK, which can be a little bit different in their programs, but again, how can we collaborate together to maximize each of their potential and to take a look at our instruction and make sure it is the most effective? So again, what does that look like? We started climate checks this year, and so climate checks are just our way as a staff to look at, what are those frustrations that we're having or challenges that we're facing? And keep a pulse on them and looking at, okay, what can we do to make it better based on the things that we can control? And so you can see from September to October, you know, we, we definitely haven't seen a decrease. But two of the biggest challenges, at least we started with, was the bathrooms. So switching from one side of the building to the other side of the building, our UPK classes lost access to the bathrooms in the room, but that's part of our Capitol project. We are putting bathrooms in all rooms. So as you can imagine, that was a little bit of a challenge to start the year, 'cause now you have classes that had access in their rooms, but now have to leave to go and use the ones in the hallway. And just making adjustments to what that looks like as a classroom and the procedures and how you wanna manage that as a classroom team between the teacher and the aide. But also looking at as a staff, how can we be flexible to support those classes? So for instance, like if it's, like at the beginning, it was taking classes a little bit longer to go through the bathrooms. So what are, who are some other people we have around that can kind of jump in and help so that the aide can get back into the classroom? 'Cause we really wanna watch our race heroes in the classroom. Because we really want to watch our ratios in the cla, at this level as well. As you want to make sure that you have all those supports in all of those spaces. Another challenge with that too is we're seeing more kiddos coming into preschool, not potty trained. But the nice part about that is it really showed us how we are partnering with families to get them potty trained faster. And so, that was a nice celebration that we had in the past couple weeks. You know, initially, we might not have seen it that way, but we really are partnering with parents to kind of like push the kiddos to, to get potty trained faster. And the social interactions around, with their peers has really helped with that. Another challenge that we're continuing to work on is our Committee on Preschool Special Education Referral Process. And then, what does that look like in how we're doing student placement? And helping staff understand the process and the timeline, the types of data that we need to collect. And then, making sure that transitions, when they do need to happen, are smooth. In addition to working with all of the stakeholders involved in that process. So, we're continuing to work on that as we move forward at Robert Morris. Here you will see is a, is a copy of our Quality Assurance Protocol Report. You might hear it as a QAP. And this is how, this is our, our report that we collaborate with the New York State Education Department Office of Early Learning. And it's used to assess and improve our program. It evaluates aspects like staff stability, curriculum alignment, family engagement, student outcomes to ensure high-quality instruction. When you look at this report, you'll see the different sections that the report covers. And then at the, then we get a rating on the rating level side. And so, if you look at the ratings, acceptable compliance, you'll see some limited compliance. That's really our focus moving into, moving throughout this year, coming out of last year. So, we're really looking at our learning centers, our curriculum instruction, our professional learning and progress monitoring of our CBO. It's our center-based organization, which you know as the Y. So, we have two UPK classes at the Y. And so, I work closely with the director there and making sure that we are meeting regularly and going over this report on both sides. And then documenting how we are making improvements. This, they come, we have our liaison who comes once a year and she walks through both sites. And then we go through this report with her and then go from there. So, we're just partner and progress monitor along the way. So, if you take a look at some of the compliant, limited compliances we are at for learning centers, we'll talk about some corrective action. So, when we look, what I mean by learning, when we look at our space in our classrooms for learning centers, we're utilizing the Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale, also known as ECHRS. So, we're really looking at the learning environment and looking at, how is it broken up? Does it make sense? Is it clear to students? Are there too many resources? Do we need to lessen the resources? Are the resources immersive to the, the unit that the students are learning? And are they accessible? And so, as a team, we started to use this this year and we're kind of getting familiar with it. And then looking at our learning environments. One example of how that would look, if you can imagine, if you had a shelf and the shelf fits eight bins closed of resources. It's nice, it's organized, but it's more for organization versus now imagine that same bookshelf and you take those bins off and you're looking at your unit and you're like, oh, we kind of only are going to use these three bins and we're going to keep them open and clear for kids to pull out of. So, less out of a storage space and more of a space for students to access during that center time. And that's a little tricky because we are very fortunate and we have lots of resources. And so, coming together as a team and determine, and to determine, you know, what is necessary at the time and what's not. But then also figuring out other storage options within the building. These are just some of the conversations that we're facing around learning centers. As well as making sure that they are immersive into that, that theme and unit of study. So, we did adopt a new curriculum this year, it's called Three Chairs for Pre-K, which we're really excited about. In some cases, you'll see at a preschool level, sometimes you'll see like a kindergarten curriculum trying to like force this way to be preschool. This was made specifically for preschool students. And so, we've adopted their readiness report and worked with, our team worked with our literacy coach at Jackson to clean this up and make it more parent-friendly language, so that they understand exactly what we're sending home as we assess students and show parents where they're, where they're at. So, that, our report looks a little bit different this year than you might have seen last year where we were looking at the number of letters or, or numbers, or how high a student can count out of 20. So, again, a little bit more specific. And it also includes the social, emotional aspect of their learning. And we are doing all of this through our professional learning communities. Last year, we created PLC teams and we had designated times to meet. But what we discovered was is we really need to strengthen our guiding coalition. And so, our guiding coalition is a group of teacher leaders that are really working to understand how they are going to unite and support our teams throughout the building. And that comes with our understanding and education first. We have lots of resources, including our district guiding coalition, which I meet with them regularly. And then, that information helps support us at the building level. But really, we're really honing in and focusing on how do we really cultivate the roles within our teams? So, we can get those cycles that you guys were learning about earlier tonight up and running and consistent over time. But it all comes back to like our main shift is really focusing on student learning and making sure that all kids, all kids learn. And then strengthening that tier-one instruction through our new curriculum. So, we can get to our process of intervention and what that might look like at the preschool level, which we're not there yet. So, grounding us through all of this work is our instructional playbook from our, our district. As well as we started journal, journaling this year as a professional practice for us, a reflective practice. So, what you see on there are September and October reflective questions. But also, again, our playbook that just grounds us, making sure that we are creating good relationships with students. We're teaching to an outcome, we're engaging learners, we have effective questioning, and we're checking for understanding and just remaining in that cycle. And then having those conversations like, how do we challenge kids to max, maximize their potential? What does that really look like? But recent, what is the recent, I keep going back to, what is the most recent evidence? Maybe that you displayed in the last day or the week. This week is a little, this month, we're looking at how do you show each student you believe in them while refraining them from joking or comparing them to their peers? We really want to make sure our students feel seen, feel heard, and are valued. And that takes purposeful practice. So, our focus for each of our PLCs, we have three PLC teams running at Robert Morris. At the UPK level, again, we're looking at that learning environment. And they are collaborating with preschool as well because their, the learning environment affects the whole community. Again, looking at are they immersive, accessible? But we're, while we're also looking at content like letter names and counting up to 30, which is an increase from the 20 and that you've heard in the past. And that's really a push from our new curriculum as well. At the preschool level, we're really looking at those stages of play within the learning community to prepare our learners for that content learning. And then, our related service team is really honing in on transitions throughout the school day from arrival through dismissal and just helping our, our students with IEPs that struggle the most in those situations. Here are some, just again, some pictures of some recent evidence of what that looks like. We're really grounding our learning around literacy. You can see, we got to attend our first field trip this year, we went to pulleys, did some pumpkin picking. In some of those pictures, you'll see our outside play area. We lost our playroom and our playground and half of our gym. And so, again, it's just showing like how are we able to come together and look at what we do have and make the most of it? And so, teams of teachers really just took over that, another area that, in the front of our building that we have and just made it a space to provide an opportunity for those gross motor skills. In addition to our sensory room and our gym. Just some more sensory learning and grounding students' experiences in that, in literacy. Finally, I again, want to thank you for your dedication and hard work for helping us build a better tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I have a couple questions. This Primary Project, is that something that's incorporated in both the preschool classes and the UPK classes?
Just the UPK classes? And so, UPK teachers, they complete a profile online for each student, they go through a series of questions. And then, based on that data, depending on where the kiddo falls, is how, then, then they meet and pick which students meet the criteria to fit that program. But when we look at the language that the child associates use in those interactions with the students that do get picked, there is a lot that can be transferred to the other teacher aides within the building that they can utilize during purposeful playtime. And it's really just kind of looking at the language that we use and how powerful it is in student learning. So, for example, if, if we were playing and there was like a variety of toys on the floor and there was one set of like doctor, like a doctor kit. We don't want to say like, oh, what, are you going to be a doctor? It's really kind of like looking at our language like, what is that? It could be whatever you want it to be. So, looking at our language as adults who want to make meaning for kids and finding ways to scaffold their meaning by not taking over. Does that make sense? So, like not giving them labels, allowing them to choose what they want and then explore different parts of themselves, right? So, like as you saw in the video, for someone who's not so confident during play, they might play out somebody being confident. And through that work and that interaction, we're hoping, we're, we're seeing those skills transfer over to other areas.
So, if you've incorporated more play in the UPK Student Day, and this is a new program that I assume got instituted in September, what happened to the curriculum that the UPK teachers were using previously? I mean, does that push the curriculum?
So, this is not a new program. So, Primary Project's been around for a few years now. And if you also see it in kindergarten and first grade at Jackson. And it's not that we've added play, we're taking a closer look at our play and making sure that we're being intentional with that play as the teach, the instructors in the room, right? How are we setting up the space to maximize that learning? But how are we looking closely at ourselves and how we're questioning or scaffolding and prompting kids along that they're learning? Without fully making that meaning during that, allowing them the opportunity to take ownership of the meaning and their understanding of their world. And so, previously, before we adopted the program, our, our teachers are using units that they've created over time.
Yep. And so...
And so, now, with that, that doesn't, so now we're looking at, so now this program allows us to kind of like mesh all of those things, but in one. Whereas previously, we were utilizing like foundations and Hagerty and Eureka math. This program, Three Chairs, has it all in there. It encompasses the SEL portion, the literacy portion, and the math portion rather than using three or four different programs.
The state Department of Education forced a hand and really told us we had to have one. It wasn't a choice.
And this is all the UPK classrooms?
Yeah. Uh-huh, UPK and some, and half of preschool classrooms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Depending on the level, some of our preschool classrooms learned, using the Jasper play. That continued over with parts of Three Chairs.
Oh, yeah, I have one more question. Is this happening at the YMCA UPK too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Good job, Jessica, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys.
Jessica, you're doing an excellent job. Sounds like you have a lot of obstacles each day with the, the project going on there. You and your staff have been tremendous, so thank you very much for going on the fly, adjusting when necessary.
You're welcome, yeah. And, yeah, I give them all the glory because they have really stepped up and to show them they're flexible, they're being flexible and open to new things, so, thank you.
And if there's any challenges or things that as well, you know, please don't hesitate to, you know, reach through Jason to get to us so we can assist you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Kevin McDonald, who will be presenting the G.B. Bosse's Capital Project proposal.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I guess I've been sitting here a little bit, you need to stretch a little while I'm passing some stuff out? First, as I, as I do this, I don't think I have a copy for everybody, but I got most of them.
I'll pass them over.
Gotcha. So, first, thank you for all you do for your service as volunteers to the school board. Student member, congratulations on your selection, first year of the, of the state mandated program. So, thank you for all you do and thank you for what you do. You obviously have a long night here tonight. Tonight's not going to be my normal 10 minutes now. I got a little bit more information for you about the capital project. But something that I wanted to make sure I share, because once I get talking, you know I talk fast and I get passionate and I'll forget. But I want to commend Jason and this board on your leadership regarding preschool special education. Certainly just ties into the presentation that you had. You know, I've worked at G.B. Bosse's now, it's my 13th year. Prior to that, I worked at Orleans Agribosse's in Assistant Superintendent. I had the unfortunate experience of having to close our special ed preschool program at Owen Bosse's. Lot of angry parents, a lot of angry districts. It wasn't about quality of program, it was about reimbursement rates. And Jason recently led the region in a letter that went to some legislators to try and get some funding restored or reimbursements rate updated. And it's, I think it's critical. I had to do a regionalization study and report to the department. And this was absolutely one of my recommendations because some of the things that we're seeing of, of young children, kindergarten, first, second grade coming into our schools and the demand we've seen for Bosse's programs for those students, I think some problem prevention is really in order and will help us down the road. So, I just wanted to commend Jason and his work on that. So, what I'm really here to talk to you about tonight is our Bosse's Capital Project. The last capital project that was done by G.B. Bosse's was between 2006 and 2008. That project was $39.9 million. Prior to that, '97-ish was the merger of Genesee Bosse's and Wyoming County Bosse's, okay? And, or Livingston. And my assistant Jennifer, who's been at the, in the organization for close to 40 years, doesn't remember another one prior to '06, '07, okay? So, it's been a while. And as a school district, I think you know, you're regularly trying to do these to update your facilities to stay kind of up to speed with, with technology. So, we're approaching that time again, 20 years out from the last project where, you know, roofs are no longer warranted, mechanicals are getting to end of life. And we really need to begin to update our facilities. Talked to you a little bit about this when I was here in May. But now, I'm going to go over a little bit more detail. So, you have, I just want you to know, as I stand before you today, that, that blueprint that you have was updated as of like noon today because we had a meeting with our architects and it's not complete. We had a meeting with our, so we have an advisory committee of superintendents. They advised us to see if we couldn't get some more work done, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So, let me get my glasses on. As you look at, is there an extra blueprint I could steal from you guys? Thanks, man, thank you. If you look at this first blueprint, this is the Batavia campus. Obviously, most, if not all of your kids go to the Batavia campus. I'm going to try and explain this to you as quickly as possible, but I don't want to go too fast. If you've got questions, please ask. Probably the two most significant things, the diesel maintenance facility, which is number one, which is an addition. It'll be out the back of the building. Right now, we rent space for this from Freightliner, who's kind of behind our campus, right there in the thruway. When they built that facility, they built a classroom there for us and they use it for training in the evenings. And we have one bay. And that's just beginning to cause challenges in terms of students and student work. Right now, it's limiting the number of students we can take in the program because we just can't have 30 kids working in one bay on, on, on equipment. So, we're looking at a three-bay diesel facility. The other thing that will do, it certainly won't happen in my career. I don't know about my lifetime, but if we do actually have full-size electric buses, we'll have an opportunity for at least a storage facility. We don't own many buses, we lease a couple of them. We don't own many buses, we lease a couple of buses that we'd be able to use that facility for too. So that's an addition. That's number one, I'm just going down this list. Number two, mechanical upgrades. All those little pink squares, rectangles you see, those are all rooftop units. That are approaching end of life, and if they're not at end of life, they're at end of warranty. We're gonna try and do as much of that work as we can. When you look at all of this greenish-blue color, okay, here and here, those are all, that's roof replacement. It's required when we had our roof scanned and found moisture penetrating some of the roof. That's roof that needs to be replacing, again, last time that was done. This is probably two years out, okay? When we talk about timeline from actual work happening. So by 2027, that roof will be just about 20, if not 21 years old from the last time that it was done. Number four, masonry lintel repair. Number five, cooler freezer replacement in our culinary arts program. Number six, an entrance canopy. Number seven, another big piece, auto mechanic upgrades. If you've ever been to the auto mechanics program over there, it's a terrible instructional space. There is a classroom, but when you get into the lab space, it's really three classrooms broken up by walls. And for a teacher and an aide to really try and observe and to monitor and to work with a number of students in that program, the walls are fire-rated, so what we're looking to do is maybe either garage doors that can go up that are fire-rated or do some clear walls where the instructor can see through. We've also got kind of a car storage facility along with our gas pumps on the side that need to be renovated, cleaned up, and just look a little bit more appealing from the outside. So we've got that going on too. The other piece that's not mentioned on here is in our metal trades classrooms. We're looking at upgrading the bathrooms, locker rooms, and the ventilation in the metal trades area. That includes machine shop and welding primarily. That's kind of up at number seven, where it doesn't really say it, but number seven up top there is where you'll see that happen. What you don't see in this piece is probably the one thing I want to done the most, and that's the parking lot. You guys know, most of your kids just walk across the street across the sidewalk, and that's nice, there's a sidewalk. But if you ever pull in that parking lot, it's just one big lot. And there's some arrows painted on the asphalt, but once there's anything over top of those arrows, it's kind of all for one and one for all. So, we're gonna renovate that. It'll come out a little bit closer to State Street, but there'll be a clear bus lane, a clear bus drop-off, divided by some landscaping. There'll be a big bus drop-off where the buses don't have to ever back up, just turn left and go. There'll be a separate area for the smaller bus drop-offs and student drop-off. And then there'll be a raised sidewalk that goes, is the crosswalk, so it's clear that it's a crosswalk. Right now, if you go there at dismissal time or drop-off, kids, adults walking between buses, it just isn't super safe. So redoing that parking lot is key for us as well. So that's like a five-minute overview of Batavia. Any questions, comments, concerns about that? This isn't final. Again, we're working through it, but we're getting pretty close to at least what we want to do to get to a point for a referendum, which I will talk about. This is our May Center Campus down in Mount Morris, the next page. What you will see being done here, number one, in the back of the building is an expansion of metal trades. We constantly have a waiting list for that program. An expansion of that, and not only a demand for the program by kids, but a demand for their labor by our industry and economic development partners. Creation of a new program called Power Sports. Again, especially down at the May Center that's near Canisius Lake, we always get calls about, hey, anybody knows how to fix boat motors or do this or do that? So a program that, you know, four-wheelers, boats, jet skis, UTVs, all of those types of things will move some of the small engine curriculum out of conservation and into this program. It's possible we'll start Power Sports sooner, but we also have in mind the other thing that we've done. If you've been across the street at Batavia and seen our electromechanical program with Richie Monroe, basically, these are students that are learning how to program and fix the robots that run everything, like an Amazon facility. That's become extremely popular with students and young adults in the summer, but also industry partners are clamoring for folks. So we just wrote a grant for about $750,000 in equipment that if we get that grant, we're gonna open that same program down south at the May Center. So that space could become that, depending upon what happens with that grant. The other thing you'll see, I'm gonna skip to number five. You'll see an addition of classrooms. We need an addition of classrooms? And I think where this comes in is for our special ed alt-ed population. When we try and open up a classroom for students with special needs, it's really hard to just go open up a classroom in a school district as a standalone classroom. Oftentimes, those kids need wraparound related services, OTPT, speech, counseling, all of that. When they're out there in an isolated and administrative support, when they're out there isolated, it really becomes inefficient in terms of our scheduling of our related service folks, because they're spending more time in the car than they are servicing students. So, for instance, this year, we opened up a new K-1, 2 classroom for special education. We were able to put that in our Mount Morris Central School District location with five other classrooms, with teachers, with administrative support. But to expand any further, we literally don't have a space to do it. We'll have to, we can rent from a district. We have some districts that have space. But again, if I could open up five classrooms at once, that would be doable. But starting off with singletons, which is usually the way that it happens, it's a challenge. I think something else, it'll be food for thought down the road, is do we continue to operate two distinctly separate alt-ed programs? Or do we talk about maybe running one alt-ed program? But that's nothing that'll happen immediately, and we won't have that space for a couple of years either. But I think it's smart thinking as we go down the road. Other than that, when you look at the May Center, same thing. Pink rectangles and squares are all rooftop units. The green area toward the back, number three, is the actual roof. Where you see number two and number eight, that's our COS area, cosmetology area, where we have about 115 students in that program. Talking about a redo of the COS area there. And I'll talk when I get into the finances a little bit about a redo of the COS area here at the Batavia Center as well. And then some of the similar things, entrance canopies, which aren't a lot of money, but sometimes when I go to our campuses, other than big letters that say "main entrance", if you go over to Batavia, there's three sets of double doors, right? Which one do you go in? I know it says "main entrance", but something that just makes it a little bit more, a little bit more inviting, a little bit more obvious. And as you also probably know, many of your kids who walk over, if they get there early, they get crowded into this little vestibule over there. I think we can expand that vestibule a little bit for safety and security as well, and that more room for kids who are waiting to enter the building, either before school or before our second session. Talking fast, any questions about that? Last page is real simple, just gives you a couple renderings of what that would be the diesel bay facility over here in Batavia. You see the metal Power Sports and then the classroom addition. Didn't give me the rendering of the parking lot. The other piece to this, which isn't a part of any of this, is the building where my office is in Leroy, 80 Monson Street. We've been renting that since just after the merger, when the Bosse's merged. It was, Bosse sought a site that was more central to the new Bosse's, as opposed to keeping one of the district offices on both of the sites, the May Center and the Batavia Center. So we've been renting that building for a number of years. We're in negotiations with our landlord about the potential of either us buying it or if we don't buy it, whether or not she is interested in remaining a landlord or she's gonna sell it. That creates a little bit of uneasiness, because I don't know where else we would go, but I, you know, you never know who could have plans for something. But it seems to me that we're pretty good tenants. It's an adult occupied building, there's no students in the building. It's all our business office, our school improvement department, and back office operations. So, the purchase of that building, the potential of that building is in need of some mechanical upgrades. So, that's part of the project too that isn't in here. So, any thoughts or comments or questions just quickly on the drawings? All right. I'm not gonna waste your time, but I did put some information, I think it's in the left-hand side of your folder. I just gave you like, here's some of the special ed enrollments, okay? If you take a look at this sheet, some of your special education, alt-ed students who participate in our programs, counseling services, visiting services, some of those. I also provided you with the number of career in tech kids. I shared this with you, because they're probably across the street. And these additions, these upgrades are gonna impact those kids and see that students from Batavia will benefit from the work that's going to be done on our buildings. And then there's this sheet, which Andrew may be familiar with, which basically shows you just about every, not just about, every program he participated in with Bosse's last year and the aid that it drove from that. Right again, just trying to show you a little bit of the impact and a little bit of the use that Batavia has when it comes to the Bosse's and our services, et cetera. Questions, comments, concerns? I'm moving fast. Okay, so this was presented, and this is only half of it. This is only a third of what was presented in the superintendent's retreat in May. And then we did a presentation in Eloquentville with interested business officials. This is a little bit of the economics and the mechanics behind the financing of a Bosse's Capital Project. So if you turn to page three, Bosse's a little bit different to the school district. We can finance it in one of two ways. In the end, our component districts pay for it, no matter how it's financed. On the left column, you'll see an intermunicipal agreement. That is exactly what it is, an agreement between the Bosse's and Batavia City School District to do a capital project for an amount of money. What this does is this allows Batavia City School District to pay for the project in any way they see fit. If Andrew's got a secret safe in the back of his office stuffed with cash and he wants to pay cash for it, you can do that. If he doesn't have that safe and he wants to finance it for 20 years and the board agrees, you can finance it for 20 years. If you want to finance it for four years, you get my point. You guys have control over the financing of that debt. Okay, that's intermunicipal agreement. The last bullet under that in bold, if new construction or additions is done as part of an intermunicipal agreement, Bosse's wide vote has to happen of all 22 districts. The turnout of that vote, yea and nay. If there's more yays and nays, the vote passes. It's not like 12 of 22 districts have to pass it, it's all the votes added up in all 22 districts, okay? We are going to have to do a vote for this project, because we're adding space. If we were just doing repairs and renovations, and we may buy real property if we bought Leroy. If we were just doing repairs and renovations, wouldn't necessarily have to have a whole entire vote. Here's the kicker with the intermunicipal agreement. Let's say Batavia loves the idea, and they vote yes. And 21 districts vote yes, but one district doesn't love the idea and votes no, nobody can do it. Everybody has to go through the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, which is DASNY, which is the other one. We're gonna talk about that. My hope is, as I go out and talk to board, there's just, to me, a great deal of logic behind the intermunicipal agreement, but DASNY is the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York. That's like us buying a mortgage and charging you over 20 years, which is what we're currently doing. Okay, 2007, didn't get agreement on an intermunicipal agreement. They did the vote, vote passed. It was an intermunicipal agreement, and it was a 20-year payment where every year in the Bosse's capital and our administrative budget vote, there's the admin, the capital, and the rental and the capital. That's what's been paid for over the last 20 years, okay? So the reason for the vote actually serves two purposes. Even if we do intermunicipal, we gotta have a vote for new construction. But if intermunicipal doesn't get approved by every board and that vote passes, then we can go right to DASNY. And we don't have to take another step in the process. Questions, thoughts, comments there? Okay. Next page, I kind of talked about that already. Again, as we get into this, do you guys use Bernie Donovan's office?
No, municipal solution.
Municipal solution. So you'll talk with your fiscal advisors and your attorney about, go ahead, yeah, hop in.
So the board can choose which option, right? Is that accurate, actual point?
Well, the intermunicipal agreement, all 22 boards have to approve it. So if the Batavia Board likes that idea and you approve it, that's great. I just gotta make sure I get the other 21 to go along with it too. That is, certainly, I think, I can't speak for 22 superintendents, but I think the feeling around the table and conversations that we've had is, it just gives districts more control over that. And remember, I'm gonna talk about it in a minute, when you spend that money with Bosse's, you're getting an aid that offsets some of it, not all of it, okay?
The public vote is like expected regardless, right?
It's going to be for the addition of space and the purchase of real property. So we're gonna have to do that, and our plan right now is we'll do it in all 22 districts. And then we've got a, we've got a lot of work to do with that as we continue to work toward our timeline. We're hoping for a March-ish vote. But we gotta get these numbers nailed down, so we can start working with boards on language around intermunicipal agreements. So once we have a number, then we can start talking about, and you'll see here in a minute, each district's share, and districts can start looking at it and saying, okay, this is how we think we ought to best handle it, okay? So, page four, we're good, let's flip to page five. Estimated timeline for a vote. So finalized scope and cash flow, that's kind of where we're at right now. And we're at number two. So one and two are being done as we speak. And then components to adopt in INA. I think this will occur late in 2025 into early 2026. And then you can see, we have to adopt the Necessary Voter Proposition Resolutions and then a Bosse's wide vote, hopefully in March. All right, if you flip to page six, this is based on a $40 million capital project. Back in 2006, we did a $40 million, $39.9 million capital project. You know a $39 million project in '06, what that would probably extrapolate out to today. I'm gonna talk a little bit about a strategy to help with that, but I don't think I could come before 22 boards and start talking about 80, 90, 100 million dollar Bosse's Capital Projects. But we do want to make sure our facilities stay up to date. As you look at this, this graph, and again, this is based on a $40 million capital project. We take our RWA, resident weighted average daily attendance, to say it simply, your average daily attendance, for every district. Obviously, Batavia is our biggest district. You are 10.53% of the total student population. Okay, you can see that two lines down. So based on that, your share, gross share of the Bosse's Capital Project would be $4.213 million. Okay? Questions?
Does Andy have that in his savings?
Maybe not that.
Not that much. We'll talk about that as we go on. Next page. This is a payment schedule, okay? And you're gonna see a payment schedule here a little bit further along. And when we develop this presentation, we use Perry CSD as an example. But this is determined by projected cash flow. For the purpose of this, we just said, all right, let's say a district wants to make four payments to pay for this project. You can go and take a look at Batavia, second line down, total cost, first payment, column E, F, G, H, those would be your four payments, okay, if you chose to do that. I'm gonna ask you to turn to page eight with me. So now, when you look at page eight, here's where we start talking about Bosse's aid. Okay? And if you look at column B, your Bosse's aid rate is 76%. So column B on page eight, you got your RWA, and then you come up with your Bosse's aid rate at 76%. Now you look at 4.2 million, you're gonna get 3 million in aid on that. So your total local share is now 1.17 million dollars. One difference, when we talk about Bosse's capital expenditures, that aid flows in the year in which you spend it. Right, so like our career in tech, when you pay for kids to go across the street, that aid flows a year later. So you'll get the aid on your career in tech kids that are in attendance right now, next school year, right? On capital expenditures, you get it in the year you expend it. All right. So page nine is the page where I hope everybody looks at and goes, why would we do this? Page nine is if we had to go DASNY. All right? And if you wanna just even look at Batavia, all of a sudden, your share is 6.9 million, Bosse's aid is 5 million, local share is just under 2 million. That doesn't get us one more brick, one more wire pulled. All that is, is fees associated with financing through DASNY. My only experience with this is in 2016, we refinanced our current debt. And I would be on the phone with Dan Growth and our attorneys, and if there weren't 18 people on the other end of that line with DASNY that were attorneys and financial planners and all these people, we saved about 1.6 million off of that bond and those bond payments, but it cost us almost 1.2 million just to do that. So we really, there was a net savings of 2.8, but we spent 1.2 of it just going through the refinancing and paying for the refinancing, if you will. So when you look at a DASNY project, if you flip back to just even page eight, look at column D on page eight, and look at column D on page nine, it's 26 million more dollars just to finance with DASNY. So I'm hoping when people see this, that they think, why, you know, and again, it doesn't get us any more work. Bricks, mortar, nothing, it's just, it's fees and services that go for paying for DASNY. Okay? All right, we're gonna blow right by page 10 and go to page 11. All right, we're gonna blow right by page ten and go to page eleven. And this I've actually plugged in. It says Perry's example, but I've actually plugged in Batavia's numbers here. Okay, assuming as you see in the top left corner of this box, it's seventy-six percent aid rate. So you look there, year one, and year one probably twenty-six, might be twenty twenty-seven, somewhere twenty twenty-seven. Payment due for, if you did the four-year payment plan, and remember, you can, Andy can work with these numbers, he can say, no, we want to do it over five years, six years, doesn't matter. Your first payment of one point five seven nine million is made in the first year. That says in July or whatever. And it says just before the end of that first year, you're gonna get an aid payment for one point two million dollars. Right, so that aid comes back that year. Now look at your payment the next year. Just over a million. Now, one point five million just came out of the coffers somewhere, right? You got the aid, that aid covers your next payment. Right? So the one point two comes in, the next year, July, you make a million dollar payment. By the end of that year, follow it up to the next purple box, you're getting eight hundred thousand of that back in that year. Everybody following me on this? And then you go to the one point five, one point zero five again, up to the eight hundred and eight. Then you get to your last payment of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand where you get four hundred and one thousand in aid. And of course, now you've paid it off and there, there's no expense, okay, left after that. So that's how you get to the net local share, if that were a four-year plan. If Andy pulled the money out of a secret safe and had four point two million dollars and spent it in one year, you would get the aid on that four point two million dollars in one year. But there are other, I'm making it really simple and I'm not trying to, and his job isn't, right? He needs to look at what capital projects are going on in Batavia and how is the cash flow happening in Batavia? And how might this best benefit us? I think those are all important questions, not just the BOCES piece. We're a small piece of, of your overall financial operation. But in general, that's how the BOCES can work. And then again, you can flip a few of the other pages and again, it uses Perry. It uses a bond anticipation note as an example. And then it also gets into multi-year financing, you can see up to twenty years. If you wanted to do that, you could. And so those are things you'll talk with your fiscal advisors about how to get there. And I think the, any questions on all of that? I am going way too fast, but I don't, I also know you got a meeting to have after this. So I'll pause for a second, questions?
So when would this come to us to make that vote?
So the vote on the IMAs, I would say probably within the next three months. I would hope, what I don't know as I stand before you right now, John, is you know the legal notice requirements? Before we put out, like, do I have to have all of those in before I put out the legal notices for the vote? Really doesn't impact the vote because the vote's about the type of project it's gonna be. So I'm working with, with our attorneys on some of those timelines. But I would expect in the next three months and probably closer to three months than, definitely closer to three than, say. You guys are one meeting a month? Yeah, it'll probably be June or April, is what I'm thinking, okay? The last thing, and I've shared this with Jason and all the superintendents before. I just shared with you a sample resolution, Lockport City School District. Kind of a, you don't want a funny story at this time, but I was away and my mother called me, she goes, Kevin, I got this thing in the mail, she lives in Lockport. And she goes, should I vote yes on this proposition? And I said, yeah, I'm gonna vote yes on this proposition, okay? But nice language in terms of you can, the district is able to create a reserve fund, okay, to help pay for or offset the cost of a BOCES project. You need to speak with your attorneys on this. There was some conversation around the table that you may even be able to amend a capital reserve you have now. But I'm not an attorney, I don't know that that well, so I would definitely defer you to your attorneys. I know that resolution has been vetted by at least one law firm in Buffalo that has said, hey, looks good to me. But it is a strategy you can use. And when you think about that strategy, right, if you've got money in a reserve fund and you can pull that one point five million out of reserve fund and spend it, there's gonna be an offsetting aid or revenue stream that's gonna come in. So maybe it doesn't come out of general fund, it comes out of reserve. And then you talk about the offsetting aid that comes in as revenue in that year. So some things to talk about and some things to work through, but just an idea for you if it's something you think you want to do.
Can you read them?
Yeah, I told you I was gonna talk fast. Questions? And if you guys are like, I, you know, Jesus, he talked fast and bowled us over and you asked Jason to believe me, he can, he can get to me anytime, but.
So we have some time, right? So, you know, Andy and I have been in several workshops already on this, I've seen the detailed presentations. It's a good project, obviously it's needed, I think. But we're just trying to figure out which option we want to go. And you said we recommend it most of you. Yeah, I mean, it's the easiest, rather than easiest, but the.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, the DASNY one, in terms of easy, the DASNY, they just fund it, they divide everything, you know what? It's just like getting your mortgage, right? Boom, they fund it, divide it up and you pay for it for twenty years. But, you know, it, it depends on what your philosophy is. Some people say, okay, that's easy and it's, if you divide that out by twenty years, obviously the payment's gonna be lower. You're still gonna get the aid on it. But man, we're paying sixty-six million for forty million dollars worth of work. That's the part that, you know, drives me nuts, I guess, personally and professionally. But we gotta get all twenty-two to agree to the, to the IMAs. And that's, that's my goal as I go out to hopefully encourage folks that that's, that's the route to go.
I'd imagine you will put some options together, present to us in the next thirty, sixty days for us to review.
I'll come back. Probably gonna do a, like a regional meeting like this too, in Genesee County, Wyoming, County, Livingston County. And again, just like I gave you here, once we have the final number, like right now, as of today, the project sits at about forty-two million. I don't really see it going, you know, within a couple of hundred thousand dollars one way or the other on that one. We do have to make a decision on the Leroy building, so that could fluctuate it. But if we didn't buy it, it would probably fluctuate it down.
So right now, just when I go, you're leasing the Leroy building right now?
Yeah, we lease it. We're, we're at about four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars a year is our lease on that building, about thirty-three thousand square feet. So we gotta work that out with our landlord and see if we can agree to an amenable price that works for both sides for, for purchase. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right.
Very much.
You guys have a good night, thanks for listening. If you have questions, get them to Jason, I'll, I'll be sure to get back to you, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Eli, big presentation to follow up after that one.
You guys, they're gonna be way more interested in what you guys do.
All right, Eli, you are up, sir.
First, I'm gonna start off with Make a Difference Day. I enjoyed volunteering at the Holland Land Office Museum. I mostly, you know, raped up the leaves and cleaned up the grounds a little bit, but I'm sure many other seniors enjoy doing what they volunteer for. If you want to hear their opinions, there's a new episode of Bo Devil Radio that includes interviews done not just, just, not only at the Holland Land Office Museum, but also where Mr. Cabala was supervising. Musicians of note. It was this musician, the Musicians of Note induction ceremony was this past Thursday. And I thought it went very well. It's a great celebration that highlights the former Tegus students and educators that have gone on and have been successful musically. Several of our fall sports are in postseason play. Boys and girls soccer has a sectional, have sectional semifinal games. Volleyball hosts Brockport. Cross country has their section five championships in November. And then three students from Batavia will be representing Genesee Gymnastics and Sectionals on November first.
Excellent. I saw a lot of pictures of the Community Day, that was excellent, you guys got it up there. A big part of the district is that community involvement, you guys did a phenomenal job, so thank you guys very much. All right, Mr. Smith, who's passing the torch to you.
I am.
Are you still on your thugger?
Well, I did, he did, that's why you changed it up, so they sent many people first, because I used to steal camps some of that time last year, so. So a couple of things, parlay, I piggybacking on what Eli talked about, the Make a Difference Day, there are some, some cool pictures. Batavia Cemetery, Holland Land Office. Eli knows that Canard is just giving a lecture on some, on some history, so I was at, I was at my element there with the, with the, with the students, talking a little bit about Joseph Elocat. Mr. Tress is there with some students about him. We had some students at the Y, at the Batavia Cemetery. YMCA, where else were they? Several spots, but I picked the cemetery and the Holland Land Office to visit and then at the YMCA there as well. So that was, well done, thank you to Tracy Grover for her organization of that. It's a, it's a big task and I did listen to the podcast, Eli, about that. And Eli did say on the podcast, that was his first time ever inside the Holland Land Office, right? So glad that I've done that for you guys, so that was fun. Principals Month, we want to recognize the five principals. They had some nice Facebook posts last week that received some very good comments, so happy Principals Month to Mr. Kessler, Mrs. Corzilius, Dr. Pride, Ms. West and Mrs. Nataro. I thank them for their leadership, not only this month, but all the months during the school year, so thank you to them. The Fall Ball was held last, a couple of weeks ago. There's some pictures there of the kids setting up, thanks to our high school advisors and Ms. West for this successful event a couple of weeks ago. This was kind of cool, I mentioned this last spring or so, we, the school, the middle school got, got an award for a peer mediation thing. And that's come into realization, though, I stopped at the YMCA Friday afternoon. We had about maybe thirty middle school kids from grades five through eight, all backgrounds who applied to be part of the series, that they're on days two and three right now. And we brought estate trainers and the students were trained on peer mediation. And it was not an easy task, I sat there for about an hour or so. Dr. Corey was there and there's, the day three is happening on Tuesday. Am I, want to add anything to that? I feel like kind of cool what's happening in the middle school.
They'll be ready to roll and the teachers that are with them will help in the process, they'll never do it alone, but they're learning, learning some really good skills to help them in the real world and in school.
So that's really neat. To ha- happen at the middle school. Musicians of note, again, Eli likes to talk about that, we had four inductees who were, who were inducted last Thursday night. Thank you to Ms. Case and the selection team for their work on that. We get several applications each year, so very nice event. Some of them are music teachers, Mr. Hamilton, that was actually my music teacher way back when, and John Kennedy, Al San will know that too, so I had her way back when. Her daughter was there, we had Dr. Reese is a percussion instructor at Brockport. Suzanne Layden is an orchestra instructor in Glen Falls. And Carol Haber has sung, has taught at the New England Conservatory, so sang some operas. So some very nice inductees that we had on Thursday night and our students performed as well as part of the event. In the workshop, I want to recognize John Kennedy, Mr. Kessler and his entire faculty and staff as part of our POC process. John Kennedy was the first to be recognized this year for the promising practices. Essentially, they met some criteria, some fairly rigorous criteria to be recognized by solution trace of promising practice. Thank you to Corinne who attended the celebration, you want to add anything to there?
You were there for the event.
Yeah, it was really great, it was, well, there was a lot of people there, attendants. Just honor everyone in celebration.
Jackson School is out of their way next to be filling out the application as well, so that's a great recognition for our faculty and staff at JK. It's kind of a cool event, BNS football players, the AGS football players were at Jackson a couple of weeks ago. So I love seeing the high school football players hanging out with the little kids and talking about green choices and red choices. Our soccer players are gonna be there next week, I think, as well, right, this week as well, to, to do a similar type thing with our little kids over at Jackson. And Glow with Your Hands, this was a couple of weeks ago, where we had several Batavia students participate. I was not able to attend this year, it's helped at the fairgrounds. A great way to expose our students to careers in the, in those types of fields, manufacturing, animal science. It's a wonderful event, we have a similar one in March at GCC on medical careers. And as Kevin said in his presentation, I want to thank Al San and Corinne. We did invite Assemblyman Hall, Senator Rowe to visit our Robert Morris preschool program about a month or so ago that generated some letters that I wrote that Corinne, I think, was gonna contact other board members advocating for better rate setting and better reimbursements for our instructors, related service instructors as well at Robert Morris. So you can see our Senator and Assemblyman there and they got a tour of the program. And Al San and Corinne, if you want to add to that, as far as the visit itself.
It was eye-opening.
Yes. Especially in the pre-K area.
Yeah.
And soccer and cross countries, and first, our boy soccer team won the first division title. I think in their history. And the first sectional game last Friday night and won. And our cross-country team also won the Monroe County titles as well. Our girls, girls, girls soccer team and boy soccer, boy soccer team are still alive, they have sectionals Tuesday, Wednesday. Football has their sectional game next Friday night. And of course, thank you to our school board, I want to end with that. And upcoming dates, we have Fall Festival at Robert Morris, lots of Halloween events at John Kennedy on Friday as well. We have a chorus concert on, on November sixth, our Veterans Day concert on the tenth of November. We'd love to have you all come to that, it's in the morning, I can give you some details on that. And then our Drama Club is having their, their fall production. I have no idea what it's about, but it sounds interesting, Gamer Tears. So Eli, you know anything about that?
Nothing.
Any questions?
What time is the November tenth, what?
I think it's at nine o'clock, but I'll double check. It's, it's usually the morning. Any, any other questions? Good, thank you.
Thank you. All right. That was a whole load of presentations today. We need a motion to approve the grouping of consent items.
So.
Why don't we do that? I'm on that volunteer, so.
We've been staying from the volunteer.
You'll have stayed from the volunteer, okay.
I also want to note that number nine on the consent contracts, that MOLI for Winter Guard, we're gonna postpone it till next month, we're, we're still trying to track down a couple of schools. But this happening, we just want to hold off on it, so that's been taken off the board agenda. Not lying, but it's still on the paper, so we'll, we'll get back to that next month.
All right. Still want to make the motion, bud? All right, so we have first sidebar, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Anderson, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That'll bring us down, we do not have any old business, so that's gonna bring us to new business. First up, we will need a motion to change our voting venue. And I just wanted to ask what, what this change was and why.
Sure, of course, the change, practically speaking, you've heard a lot about this tonight, is due to Robert Morris and not being open for the vote. It, I think that it's going to be open, it's not going to be accessible for the vote. So we're gonna recommend a move to John Kennedy. That will only be for this year. And Robert Morris, just again, it is open, but however, due to the work that's happening, their room is now easily accessible. So we're gonna make arrangements to be approved over John Kennedy, everything else will stay the same.
So basically, anyone who voted at Robert Morris will now go down the street a little bit. All right, excellent. So do I have a motion for the change of voting venue?
To whom?
We'll give it to Mrs. Land Bay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Roll, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And right along with that is a motion to approve our voting times. The voting timeframe will be eleven AM to eight PM for the hours of voting on Tuesday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion? My Mrs. Bowman, do I have a second? My Mrs. Anderson, any discussion?
Just to clarify, what are the times now, which is the?
They were eleven to nine, eleven to eight, we had very few voters come from, from Detroit today. I didn't even answer that question. That's a good question, I don't want you to ask a question.
I know, I got the spreadsheet, I'll, I'm gonna.
Good question, yes.
It's showing right here.
Yes, all kidding aside, you know, we had very few come from Michigan.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is a motion for contract signature authorization for the twenty twenty-three BCSD Reimagined Capital Project. This will be authorizing our superintendent to sign contracts on behalf of the district.
Once they're approved, or once the, the bid, once the, once the bid is awarded. So the, the board still has to award the bid.
It's just you signing the contract.
Signing on that, that's it.
Right. Excellent. Do I have a motion?
To whom?
Mrs. Landby, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And last, for new business, we have to approve the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven BCSD budget guidelines and budget calendar, uh, which is our listed on your agenda items there, breaks everything down for the whole budget process. Uh, do I have a motion?
Still moved.
By Mrs. Beck, do I have a second? By Mr. Roll, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now we have, we do have, uh, our other administrative reports and curriculum on instruction in the business office. They are listed on the website or, uh, on the agenda for you to review. Uh, do we have any board member comments or reports? No? All right. All right, we do need to have a motion for adjournment to go into executive session. The executive session will be to the medical and financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
By Mrs. Beck, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Bowman, all in favor?
Aye.
And we will not be coming back to public session after. All right.